We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. First meeting of the Yufalla City Council for the year 2014. Wish everyone here a Happy New Year and thank you for coming out. I know it's a little cold, but we appreciate you being here to participate in this meeting. I'd like to ask Pastor Alvin Godfrey of the New Dimension Chapel, is that correct? The right church? Church, right? To lead us in invocation and then we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you, God, for this gathering and we thank you for this meeting. We thank you for the council members, that your blessing, one by one, name by name. We put this meeting, this gathering, in your hands, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed. Roll call?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Knight.
Present.
Mr. Bennett.
Present.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Ms. Wall.
Present.
Mayor, we have honors. Do you have some honors?
They're running late.
They're running late? Alright, we'll come back and pick it up here later in the agenda unless there's an objection. We might have a recognition or honor here. And you can give me a heads up on that, Jason?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Council has the agenda, it was published on the website and sent out. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda?
No move.
Second one, Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. We have a consent agenda that consists of the minutes of the December 16th, 2013 meeting and also claims docket dated December 31st, 2013 in the amount of $69,020.32, one of the wishes of the council on the consent agenda.
No move.
Moved by Mr. Knight, seconded by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Who carries? Mayor? Floor is yours.
Just a few things here before we're ready to move forward with the Yufalla Senior Center. USDA grant, all the requirements have been met, so we're gonna start bidding that process out. Second item here, we all know about the, we had a try to be selected as one of the six sites for testing drones in the United States. Unfortunately, we did not receive that selection. Based on the areas of the country that got this, got these sites, they were looking for more desolate, desolate areas, Alaska, Nevada, northern New York, North Dakota, Texas, and Virginia. So, I'm sure there was some politics involved with that, but unfortunately, we did not get that selection. Also, I see Eddie Tyler's here. Eddie, do I understand that schools will be closed tomorrow? So, all Yufalla City Schools and...
I think Lexa is open until 10:00.
Opening at 10:00, okay. So, we've got some cold weather here and everyone just needs to be mindful of it, careful. Hopefully, we'll get through it. I think it's pretty warm, the temperature's about the end of the week, but it's gonna be cold from now on, so just bundle up and stay warm. So, and the only other thing I gotta say is, there's more eagles.
Hey, let me ask you one thing, Mayor. Even though there was more than airspace using drones, there's also some of the other tactical and ground utilization, robotics and so on, do they plan to continue that effort at the site?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, we have a, we have an event, and we actually was awarded that event for three years. There'll be thirty, I think it's thirty-two college, different colleges will come here for a ground robotics competition at our facility out there. And it'll be a, it'll be a good economic development tool because each time you get thirty-five different schools, I think the teams are like five people per team and their coaches, so it'll be a good time to kinda tie in some favors with our schools, with our robotics teams at the schools. And we'll get to observe it, it's August of next year, so we did get that event for the next three years. So, yeah, there'll still be a continuing effort out there and all my reading about the drones and that's, that process is gonna move pretty fast. It's not, I mean, there's gonna be a window there, but it's, it's not gonna be a very long window and I feel like, you know, that'll be, that'll move a lot quicker than what they're predicting because of all the applications of drones. And we already have it in the military and other things, but there's a lot of applications for the private sector, so I feel like that process is gonna move pretty fast. And really, that's probably just a short window before you actually have, I think they were talking about Amazons already trying to deliver some of their packages, I think, with drones. So, it's coming, it's coming quick. So, who knows what might happen in five years or how we may be, maybe forms of transportation, you just never know, things are happening so fast. But to answer your question, yes, there's still things going on out there and still an effort out there. The only thing that having this designation does is, one of the biggest things, is it eliminated the time to get a COA, a Certificate of Author, Author, Authorization, got tongue tied there, to fly a drone. And this, just having this designation shorted that window of time that it takes to get that authorization. So, there'll still be drones flying out there, it just takes a little bit longer to get that authorization. So, anyhow, maybe there'll be some more opportunities for us, and there's still some opportunities here, so, you know, we'll look forward to those. That's all I got.
For visitors, we have Ms. Judy Matheson. Are you the Chair of the Historic?
I am.
Judy Matheson?
I'm the Chairperson.
Chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Right. And this is David Angemont, he's my Chairman in Charge of Vice. And he does a good job of it. But anyway, we meet the second Tuesday of every month, I sit right there, so get rid of those ants.
They're gone, they're gone.
Okay, good. Our yearly report is on file with you guys and with the proper authorities at state. This year, we had a lean year as opposed to our other years. We only had seven COAs and, I mean...
And that COA is a...
A Certificate of Appropriateness, but what I'm, the COAs, three of the COAs that we had or four, were actually add-ons to ones that we had already approved. And then the work review ones, we had three of those, bringing us to $308,800. Three hundred, wait, let me start over. How much is it?
Three...
Three oh eight, comma, eight oh oh. I have a hard time with numbers, sorry.
I think it's that front row down there.
It is.
It might be that spray they put in here for the ants.
It could be, it could be affecting my ants. I am an ant, I am an ant, so, and as opposed to last year, we had over a million. Our biggest was Shorter Mansion with the $200,000. Otherwise, it was just small things. Any questions? Any concerns?
Have you had any, have there been any issues that have come up that...
No, we haven't. The only issue that we had, we did discuss about painting the windows, 'cause the Mexican restaurant, how they have that all nice, and, you know, do we have anything governing that, which we don't, which we have to look into. And that's about it. Nothing was denied. You know, we did have, one of the sign things was, they made a little, couple of changes to it, but that was all. The one that we were going to deny, if they had come to us, never came to us, so we didn't have to deny them.
Okay, great.
So, basically, we're still very nice.
Great. Any questions of the council members?
The Grand Board.
I see. I wanna, that's our volunteer board.
It is.
And have you had quorum for all your meetings where you had to make a decision?
We've had quorums for all of our meetings. We haven't had all of our meetings because we had no work to do.
Sure.
But, yes, all of our meetings, they show up, they're diligent.
We appreciate, we appreciate your service, as most of our boards are volunteer members and a lot of times, if they don't have a quorum or they don't make the effort, it can delay projects and it can have an impact. So, thank you for your service and please pass on...
Well, we also make it known that we will meet on an emergency basis, that they don't have to wait a month, that, you know, if they wanna have their roof done or painting done, we will meet with them right away.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Judy.
Alright, we have, we'll go ahead and go to our honors and recognition.
Sure.
You wanna make your announcements?
Yeah, Jason, then you wanna introduce something?
My name is Dave Bennett and we have the honor of hosting Soojin, this is Hannah, Soojin Yang, or in Korea, Yang Soojin. And she is with us for eight weeks as a partnership with Hyundai Polytech. Her father is an employee there in Korea and he wanted Soojin to have an experience in America. And so, by volunteerism, I guess you would say, we have the opportunity of hosting Soojin. She's living with us and is learning a lot of American culture from our daughters, who are thirteen and ten. We have found that even in Korea, they're just as wired up at that age as they are in America. So, would you like to tell them about your experience in Yufalla?
No.
She has enjoyed many things already in Yufalla, including River City Grill, and we had to get her to Shorter Mansion to see some of our heritage here in Yufalla. And the weather will cooperate and we want to take her on a tour of the lake and let us see, do that as well. And we are glad to have Soojin, certainly would like to tour the Hyundai Polytech plant and see what her father does in Korea, just as, as our own work in Yufalla. And thank you for having us.
And thank you and welcome to Yufalla. I'd like, this would probably be a good time to mention this, because Hyundai Polytech has already, has contacted both Lakeside and Yufalla City Schools about doing a teacher exchange, and that's in the works, and I think maybe either one of you or both could elaborate on that a little bit?
Y'all are going this summer, I believe, right?
Right. Ms. Jennifer Day, she's married to Lawrence Day. She is gonna go this summer and Yufalla City Schools is gonna represent next summer.
Next summer.
We're going to do a presentation and really feel honored to be able to have Soojin here.
Yeah, this is a great, this is a great opportunity and also in terms of working with economic development, the more we can enhance these relationships within the business community and build the bonds, understand the different cultures, but also make it easier so when, if they have employees come over here, that hopefully, they can have their children here and we can meet their education needs. And likewise, we can learn more by sending teachers and maybe students over there, so go ahead.
Our representative, we Matt Jones, High School Ma'am Teacher.
Great.
Super.
So, one, we all appreciation to Hyundai Polytech for, they initiated this, and then also thanks to our school systems here for being willing to participate in this program. We appreciate it. Thank you. Ordinances under...
No, no, okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, James, I skipped by you, I didn't mean to do that. But depends, I may, I may come back and attract that. Go ahead, I know what you, fire away.
I'm gonna rest it again, the same issue I had as before.
Yes.
I'm not gonna be the dead horse until then, okay? I'm gonna wake it up. Alright? And that's how I do business. I ain't got nothing to do, I don't have no job, I'm retired, but when I see something wrong, I need to get it fixed. I'm still begging for you guys to take a vote and tell me which direction you're going on the, on the vote that was taken by the citizens of Yufalla to elect our city school board. That's big to me. I got fifteen grandchildren. If I got somebody I don't feel like representing me, that's not doing a job, I want to get rid of them in four years. I can't do that. The citizen has spoken that we will, we wanted to elect the school board. All I want is a vote on it. I don't think that's too hard. What do you think?
Let me ask a question off there. You mentioned that the citizens of Yufalla, that's what I'm taking, let me see if I understand this correctly, that the citizens voted to implement an elected school board. I'm not aware of that. I've been involved with the, with the school systems since seventy-nine, and I'm not aware, was that in a general election? Was it in a special election?
It was a general election, it did whole count at one time. A plain end-up implement, Yufalla did not. And I'm trying to figure out what happened to them. When the people speak and it's voted on, they told you what we wanted, and that's what we're looking for. Now, I can get you the results of the election, you should have it at City Hall, and I can get it from the probate office.
Yeah, we'll check off of that. And I'll be glad to follow up with those points.
It need to be followed up on. I'm not coming back and asking no more, okay? I know how to take care of business real good.
My point would be, just in the general approach to the education system and so on...
They have not approached good when the people voted to do such a thing, it need to be implemented.
Well, it's also representative government, so you're right, that's why you're coming and talking to us, but I just wanna mention critical factors that take place in education.
Yes, sir, and I understand those factors, okay? Because, you know, I believe in Yufalla High School and the school system. What I don't believe in is when you take the people, that we put in a certain area to say, "We're gonna do this," and we don't do it. Government for the people, by the people. I believe in it. I was a soldier for twenty-seven years. I was prepared to give my life for government, and I still am. But what bothers me is when you get in order people.
Well, let's follow up on that information, we'll pick up...
Well, you want me to come back, 'cause it's the last time I'm coming back.
You can come, and you're welcome to come.
Well, I know I'm welcome, but you know, sometimes you gotta fight fire with fire. And I don't wanna do that. I love the city, but I'm prepared to do what it takes to get an answer to the people.
Well, let's see what that vote was and what it entailed, because I, right now, I'm at a disadvantage, I don't completely understand...
I would give it for you, Mr. Knight, Lucia, I'd get all your confidence and let you review it.
Now, James...
But it's the fairest thing to do.
Was that a vote for the Board of Education or a vote for the Superintendent of Education? Which was it?
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
Okay, the Board of Education should be the controlling factor, Yufalla City Schools, by, by the people. And that's all a mix of fuck. You know, we got a good Board of Education, but there's something wrong there. The people did not elect them, they was appointed.
Okay.
And that's my point. Alright?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? This lady right here in the aisle, please state your name, you were, you had your hand up first.
Me.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Rachel Smith.
Rachel.
And I'm with the Ordinary People Society, and I represent ordinary people. And it had brought, had been brought to my attention that the Chief of Police, Mr. Carter, was placed on administrative leave, but it also had been brought to attention that he still has access to the police department, that he comes in and out when he gets ready. And I'm asking the Board, when you're on administrative leave, do you have access to the police department?
I would say that administrative leave keeps a person from making any...
Decisions.
Decisions and operating in that authority, but there could be times, because it is administrative, that there are things that take place in terms of individual payroll, other coordination that could take place, and I defer to, if they wanna add to this, as far as coming in, it doesn't restrict somebody. It's like you can come to the police department, right?
What I'm saying, if he's on administrative leave and the DA's office has found ground to take his case to grand jury, therefore, should he still have his possession, property that belongs to the city? I mean, he has access to destroy evidence, and it's a known fact that Commandant's officers in the city of Yufalla has tapped whatever evidence he wants.
I'm not, if you have that information, I would say, and you can, you can prove all that?
Uh huh.
Then I would encourage you to bring it to the proper authorities, either the DA, since you're accusing the city of that, but I defer to our city attorney. Have you had any information off of this line?
I mean, let me, let me just assure you, Ms. Smith, as far as, I mean, I assume that what you're alluding to is the massive shooting incident. There, all of the evidence, all of the information has been turned over to the ABI. The ABI is the only person that has custody of the primary evidence in that case, and so there's no opportunity, not that I'm even saying that anything would ever be destroyed or tampered with by the police department, the police chief, or the city of Yufalla, but the idea, I mean, I don't believe that that would ever happen, but the ABI has all that, and then now that's all been turned over to the DA. And as far as the District Attorney's Office is concerned, it's part of a matter of course that the matter go before the grand jury. There's been, not been any determination of any wrongdoing by any party so far at this point. I mean, so it's not that the DA has decided to turn it over to the grand jury because he's made some determination of some wrongdoing on the part of the officers involved or anybody. It is part of his normal course of business to send every death case, to submit it to the grand jury. So, I just didn't want that impression to be left, or the impression that there had, would be, or could be, any opportunity for anybody to tamper with any kind of evidence.
Well, therefore, there was no reason to put him on administrative leave.
Well, as a matter of practice, when there's an investigation like this, that's, that's been the process followed, and that's what was followed here.
Okay, and back when...
It's not a matter of guilt or innocence, it's a matter of, once again, for all that to be followed.
Okay, so he's been in Yufalla, what, a little over six months? And when you all, did you all, when you all did the background screening, did you all know in that screening that he had already shot a black male in the back? I mean, was it in the report that he had already been accused of shooting a black man in the back and his cousin detective ran over the same male with his car?
We're, we're not going to discuss any of those facts here today.
By just saying, I mean, when you're back, I mean, the citizen of Yufalla wanna be protected.
We had...
They're supposed to be peace officer to protect and serve.
We understand that.
And, you know, we don't want our constitutional rights violated.
No, and we don't want to violate anyone's constitutional...
And I feel like massive constitutional, Fourth Amendment rights is violated. Any person should feel secure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Anyone else wish to address? Yes, ma'am, you had your hand up next.
Happy New Year's Day, everyone. I have a concern.
State your name.
Oh, I'm Annie Hale, I thought everybody knew my name.
Well, just, so we can log it in.
Annie Hale, Annie Hale. I have a concern, and the weather's just right for me to voice it. I've been here, it's been a concern all year. We're talking about the cold temperatures and stuff. I wanna know what can be done about a homeless shelter for the city of Yufalla. I'm very much concerned for the people of Yufalla. You know, we said bundle up and go in. We can do that, but what about the people that don't have a place? And the reason it concerned me so much, and I don't know, I don't know what steps I need to go about to even consider or who I need to go, what channel to go through about a shelter, but it bothered me very much so to have an animal shelter, but we don't have a shelter for people here in the city of Yufalla.
I understand your concern. We had a, we had a discussion about this, 'cause what we tend to have in Yufalla and Barburg County is temporary shelters during certain times that come up, and we had discussion today, Mayor and I, Johnny was in on it, and we've made an inquiry with the Emergency Management Agent in there who tends to control opening up shelters. We have certain facilities within Yufalla and out in the county that agree to open up tornado, when we have tornadoes and hurricanes, and your point about the cold is very valid because we don't always think about that until all of a sudden it happens, 'cause it doesn't happen that often. So, that inquiry has been made to the EMA as far as opening those shelters. I wish I had an answer for you, I don't have one at this time, but I know there's been communications with, put out to EMA about possibly opening up those shelters.
Right.
We do not have a permanent shelter. You're exactly right, and there's a number of other areas that we have to collaborate with Dothan or other cities where we have special needs. You know, you probably know the House of Roots for domestic violence and so on. We have, we rely and collaborate with Dothan and find shelters for that, and that's more of an ongoing program. And I'm trying to think of some of the shelters that we have that are available. I know, I'm quite sure, one of the churches, if not two, are on the list for EMA shelters, and I know the National Guard Armory is available through certain timeframes, but it's usually coordinated through the EMA, and it might be something we wanna enhance locally more.
Well, I really, not, I mean, the cold weather is extremely bad, but it's a need year-round. I mean, I listen, I have a scanner, and I listen at the scanner, they got people that's walking and wandering, and a lot of them ain't bothering nobody, they just think out for where to go. And I begin to think about an animal, if I got an animal at my house and I'm feeding mine, and then there's somebody roaming the street trying to survive, most of these people that's going around someplace, it's a survival mode, they trying to survive. And then we got officers, they're telling me, "You gotta leave." Where they going? They go to Georgetown, Georgetown keep them moving. Where they going? So, it's a problem.
I will tell you that in some situations, and I, I don't know if there's anyone here in the police department, we've, we've had some funds where we, and you're correct, that the city or the financial, I mean, the Family Service Center, the Clearing House...
Right.
Where we'll give them funds to go to a city that has a shelter. So, that happens sometimes, or people are in transit trying to get somewhere. So, that's been a, you know, kind of a fix, but doesn't necessarily solve the overall problem. You're correct, it moves it up.
Right. And this is what I wanna ask of, I'm not, I'm not a homeless, I have a concern for other people, not only Barburg County, Hennepin County, and everywhere. Is it any way that we could come together as a city council, the churches, not all the pastors, the churches? I feel that if we could come together and work together, I'm not putting all the burden on the city of Yufalla, 'cause I feel like my pastor, and I tell them all the time, they supposed to be the one leading out. We supposed to be able to work hand in hand, helping each other.
Correct.
So, is it any way we could form a committee where we could meet and come up with some kind of plan? We've been talking about it, talking about it, but is it any way, not shifting, like I said, I'm not shifting everything on you all, because I tell people all the time, I'm a church, I attend church, but my, my workers out in the field, and the majority of any, I feel like a pastor should be out in the field working. This is ministry, trying to get these people off the streets and somewhere to go, and even jail. Every city got a jailhouse. And if they can fund a jailhouse, I know we can fund a homeless shelter by whatever means necessary. That, I mean, I don't think I'm asking too much, if we could come together, get a committee, and we all meet?
You know, excuse me for cutting you off, this is Hale, but I was sitting here, I tried not to say nothing, but...
Say it.
We sit a few moments ago, the mayor and myself, and we talked about just what you're talking about now. I know we got the TIM, I know they'll be open, TIM or the Street Department, they'll be available. I know the Ward Board, they'll be available if we need them, and we said something, Mayor, about blankets. And see, things like this, you might not want to say it, you know, let me tell you how the majority of we are. We want to think about these things, we want to talk about these things, but we do nothing. We always sit around and expect the next person to get up, like you was talking about getting pastors together, and, see, that's something need to be in the works.
Right.
But who is spearheading it? Nobody.
I mean, I can't get ahead, I talked to Reverend Davis, I can't get ahead of any pastor. What I'm saying, is no way they can, not, not just people in general, we ain't got to be in no ministry, but people in general, if we still need, we should address it.
Would you sit down, please?
No, sir, I want to help you with that.
Well, I'll call on you a second. We'll call on you a second. Thank you.
No disrespect to any pastor, but I'm just saying, as an individual, I have a responsibility. If I see a homeless person in need or hungry, it's my responsibility to aid that person. But if we as, if we as a group could do, we could get more done, we could come up with a resolution that would work for everybody.
And you know, that's the first thing, you know, I was trying to get this grant in Dudley Quarters to help fund houses over there that need upkeep. I met so many people that's living on the street, as we say, shacking with other people that's in abandoned houses. The first thing they asked me, Mr. Knight, how about getting us a shelter so we'll have somewhere to go?
They need it.
Now, what can I tell them? We don't have the land, the city don't have the land, this is to help people that's out there that need their homes improved. But I have had people to approach me and ask me that same question you're talking about. But ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you, and I'm, y'all might hate me after tonight, so be it, but I'm telling you, we got to get together, we got to work together and stop stabbing and knocking each other in the back and help one another. We just got to do it. You might be living well, I don't doubt that, but everybody out there is not living well. Somebody out there tonight is suffering.
That's it.
And I told the mayor tonight, we trying to get this road, I'm gonna get off it, we trying to get this road, I'm praying, I'm praying that far as he a road, do not ice up and trees get across the road, but we got all of these elderly people over there that won't be able to get help. I'm praying that that don't happen tonight. Now, I am praying for this, but ladies and gentlemen, we got to do something. Stop putting it on your neighbors, start meeting and help do things yourself. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have one other thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Nagamore, address this, you might be able to help. Over in the Douglas Quarter area, I talked to Mrs. Streeter.
Yes, ma'am.
And Miss Hattie, she was gonna be here by the Sunday, had to rush him back to Dothan.
Yes, ma'am.
They want to know how is, has her order of, you know, houses redone.
It's doing good, and it's going well, but you know, it is, it is a Dudley Quarter project. You had to name it something. It's named Dudley Quarter. You got a center of location, what they are working. After they work within that location, if money is left, then they are working on the outskirts. Do you understand what I'm saying? Some people are not in that area where they are.
Is Miss Hattie and Miss Streeter, Miss Hattie?
I think they are just on the outskirts of it.
So they won't be affected, they won't be in any harm?
No, but if we don't use all of the money by them being that close to the project, to the grant, I know you're talking about, that's where I think we'll be able to work with. I have taken, yeah, I know, by Zion Baptist, I've taken the man out there and let him seen the housing off. We've been through the area.
Yeah, y'all worked on a house right around from the street.
That's right.
That was the first house they worked on.
Yeah, but that's, see, that's moving back toward Boundary Street within the area.
Okay.
But if you go north, you're working out of the Dudley Quarter.
You need to let them know, they asking me every time I see you, and you get, I know you get tired of the calling.
Well, I just have to go, somebody got to go, I go.
They looking for you.
I don't.
Because when I call you, I'm calling on somebody else's behalf, because they have to get with me. But as soon as you can, let them know what's going on.
I will, but I've been sick, and I'm not putting it on, I've been sick, so.
Right, because every time I see them, you know, they'll stop, and you seen Mr. Knight?
Yeah.
And I told him, I said, I called, he's supposed to return my call, but I haven't got it yet. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for coming. It's a valid concern.
Let me answer a little question.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'll give you the floor.
Paul, I'm the president of the Ministry of Law.
Yes, sir.
Of the Paul George. We have funds, we have funds, and we've been having, it's not something that's just starting. All somebody got to do is go to the police department. All they got to do is go to the police department. Police know to call, and we give them three nights at a local hotel. We got an agreement with the hotel, and not only do we put them up for three nights, but hearts, hearts, feet.
But do they know that? Do they have?
The police station knows it, and...
Yeah, the police station knows.
And the family service center knows it, so if it comes up...
That's what I'm saying, I know I hear a lot of times, they find somebody that don't have a place to go, they should inform them, we have a facility, we got a place, we still tell them to keep moving.
And that's the ministers doing that.
That's what, that's beautiful.
Okay.
Because it don't make sense how money lands on a phone, so many people are suffering.
Well, see, that come right...
We are not turning anybody down.
What I'm saying, if the police department have that knowledge of, they got somebody to...
Come right back to communicate.
If they stop somebody tonight out on the street, they still say, well, we got money on the phone, we can accommodate you. I don't hear that going on, like you have to keep moving.
Well, and I, one of the, and this is not to diminish the program, but as the reverend knows, sometimes, I know this happens when they maybe go to a church or to the family service center, and they say, we're gonna contact the police department and get you a place to go, they don't want to be involved with some of them, not all, don't get me wrong, but some don't want to be involved off of it. And one of the reasons it's done through the police department is sometimes we are dealing with transits. And the second thing is, the police department's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, where minister association is volunteers ministers, and all the other groups are only part-time open, so that's the reason the process is set up as it is. Is that fair, state?
That's beautiful, Paul. That's beautiful, it's good to know that the money's land is there, but it's no good if people don't know that.
That's right.
Communication.
That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Cassidy has it right on there now, he's got, he'll be publicizing, the newspaper will be publicized, thank you, Miss Hale.
Thank you.
And I guess you have something else to say?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The last time...
Can solve another problem for us, that'd be great.
Yes, sir, that's all I was trying to do.
Thank you, sir.
Especially when we are being attacked for something that they said they're not doing, they're not doing.
I don't think it was attacked, but that's not known.
Yeah, not knowing, that was it.
Yeah. But anyway, last time I addressed the council, I talked about two things, and when I finished, someone got up and said I was giving somebody erroneous information. So I brought, and I tried to find the New Fall Tribune, but I'm gonna assume that y'all have read the New Fall Tribune and see that we are living, the majority of Barbara County is below the poverty level. I'm sure y'all seen, that y'all get a very good article on that. And then I brought, I brought a paper, Les Inquirer, that covers Columbus and Phoenix City area, and they talking about the crime. Same crime I stood in and told y'all about, that somebody said I was giving somebody erroneous information, and that's the only I come to show you that.
Well, I think that...
I would never come to you and lie. I don't do that.
Reverend Ray, I think what we were under the impression, or I was under the impression, that the downtown area of Columbus, which has been greatly upscaled in the last year, is where you were discussing the homicides, and I don't believe, it's not that area you're talking about. This is two different, two different locations.
Okay, but I have, I have it from their police department that puts it in the paper, and that there's really no area that's, that's not has been touched by crime in that area. I talked about that, then I talked about people living from paycheck to paycheck.
Right.
And the New Fall Tribune did a beautiful job of telling us the percentage of our folks that here in Barbara County is living before the poverty line. I just thought I needed to come, just to, I make this available to you, and I'll go by you, the New Fall Tribune, I'm serious.
Yeah, I'm with you.
You know, somebody, you know, it's just like, it's just like, just like what Miss Hale said, she said from a heart, and it didn't bother y'all, but it bothered me, because I'm a pastor, and they're rather stating that pastors ought to do this, and pastors ought to do that, and we are doing it, and I thank you for your concern, but I had to say, I'm telling you that we are doing it. Now, the fact that somebody don't know, that's another thing, and maybe we ought to do a better job of...
Communicating.
You know what I'm saying? And then, and then, y'all noticed that when I finished talking, the last time I stood before y'all, another preacher got up and said I was giving y'all some erroneous information, and I just thought I needed to come and defend myself and show you that I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't waste your time or mine.
Well, and I think the key thing, whenever we're dealing with government and policy and things going on in the, in the community, it's very easy to take a fact and then misunderstand it or apply it incorrectly. And whenever we pass policies, that's why we get a report from the Historic Preservation Commission, because we, when we try to pass laws or funding, we have an objective, but it's very easy to, to not understand or have all the parties understand. That's why you have more than one person sitting up here, and that's why you have other areas good. So we appreciate you clarifying that.
All I want you to understand is I didn't deliver this to anybody, you know?
We understand, we understand. Thank you so much.
That's good, Reverend.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And happy New Year.
Thank you.
I'm a...
Would you state your name?
Winfred Pornell, Winfred Pornell.
Thank you.
I am coming tonight because I am a concerned citizen about this going on, about this administrative leave for the police chief. I'm a native of New Fall, and it's a beautiful city, but there's so many people that's concerned about the incident that did happen, and I was just in question to know, if he's on administrative leave, is no one available to take on his responsibilities that he really don't have, you know, to come in or work? Is it anybody that can replace him, or do he have to come to work?
We have, we have an acting chief, and the individual who, correct me, I know this, mayor, you deal with this day to day, but we have an acting chief, and Johnny, you deal with it all the time, but the acting chief was actually, had been in the acting chief role before, and had been a captain and is a captain, and has fulfilled the responsibilities of the police department for 20 years, 18, 20 years. So the acting chief had done this before, but we have an acting chief who's a captain, who's fulfilling those responsibilities. Likewise, you know, with the policeman who's on administrative leave. Now, there's no question it puts a burden on the police department, because we have two people who we can't utilize.
Yes.
And we do that partially out of some of the concerns that people say, wait a second, it hasn't been determined, all the actions here were the actions that should have or should not have taken place. And that's what the, that's what the ABI is helping us determine, and also will be reviewed and determined through the district attorney in his process. So we have to be fair to both the individuals involved as city employees, and we have guidelines that we have to follow off of that. They're not just the city guidelines, they're also employment guidelines set down by the federal government and so on, and our HR director advises us on that, and likewise, our city attorney. So we do have people filling those roles, but, and we have not gone out and hired new people. We don't have the funds to do that. It'd been nice if we could have brought in temporary folks to do some of this, and, you know, we're not in that position right now. So your concern is a valid one. I want you to know how it's trying to be balanced between the correct process and following the law, and with due regard for the position that all parties are in. Appreciate your patience and concern off of it. And, ma'am? We wish we, we wish we'd had a, the information and could have had a clear response and be moving forward with a resolution on all this, but we can't impact it anymore than they could move forward with the investigation. And the last word we had was that they're still doing some forensic and autopsy reports that come in, in addition to what the DA already has. So we, you know, it's up to the DA off that. Johnny?
I would just like to make one thing clear. The police chief and the other officers on administrative leave.
Okay.
But now, you need to get that straight. They are not coming down here and working.
Okay.
They are not on the working schedule, period. They are not fired, because they don't have the incentive placed against them through the courts to fire them. They are on administrative leave, that means stay away from here. Now, I don't know if you've seen somebody down here, I imagine, I've gotten a report that when it first happened, that some people saw him down here, and I think some people were, were supposed to tell him that, you know, I think that's the chief that's in charge to tell him that, you know, he's not supposed to be on premises. But now, he's not working. I don't think, I don't think, and I have to find out this through the attorney, I don't know if he's even allowed to go into his office and all of that. I don't know that. But he's, he's not working.
Okay, well, I would just, you know, being a concerned citizen, you know, out in the community, and you know, people are really disturbed about what happened, and when I heard this, I said, well, at least, you know, we could get more information if we come down here to the council meeting and see exactly what's going on.
And I tell you this, it's just like a teacher. If a teacher do something, and they are placed on administrative leave, they are not coming there to work, but they are not fired. They are staying on administrative leave until the incident is clear. Once it's clear, then it's enough up to them to either rehire him or bring him back or whatever.
Just a second. Kelly, you want to add any clarification to this at all?
Just to add on what you've already said, administrative leave is a matter of course, and I actually was aware that Chief Hunter was here this morning, he was here to get some personal out of his office, and then left.
He's still in the door, he's still in the door.
He's still in the door. There's no reason for him not to have to. And that's a matter of course, with any boy...
I was just wondering, what, you may take out of his position if he go in there and say, you know?
Nothing, he has a professional...
Nothing.
He is just not performing the business of the chief.
And the same thing with the police officer, yeah. So I wanted, we just wanted to clarify that, so. And I, listen, it'd be better for all of us, the sooner the facts are out, the sooner it can be resolved, because, one, there's a, there's a, there's a matter of justice, and then there's also a matter of concern to make our community safe, and look at what we can do to keep it safe and operating in the way that's the best interest of all citizens.
Absolutely.
So I don't think there's any disagreement with the parties off of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to address the council?
If I may just one minute.
Yes, sir, Mr. Reverend.
Now, after being, after sitting here and all of the conversation, I too have some great concerns about that, because all fairness to the people, I pastor church here, and our people, I'll talk to the mayor, I'll talk to other people too, they are asking, they'll say, speak to your parishioner, tell him to be quiet, be patient, we done that. But all fairness to the community, also to the family. Now, we know he have not been charged with anything, but all fairness, I don't even think he should, if he coming into the office. I think that his keys should have been turned in. If he coming into the office, that mean he can, he can come in and take anything out of the office. I know I've seen him there several times. I have no beef with the chief, I've talked to him, I got to know him. But all fairness to the community, I think that we must be fair on both sides. You just can't take us to be people that don't have no kind of conscience or no kind of intelligence, because we are an intelligent community.
Right.
And I think if the community is gonna move forward, we must do it together. Be fair in all our deliberation, be fair to all our citizens, whether they have money or whether they do not have money, because, you know, for all our best interests, we got to work together. And I just feel like, that, you know, I feel like really...
We'll review the aspect as far as coming into the office. We know he's not supposed to be working, and there may be questions that come up in terms of administration that he, that the, that the HR director has to ask certain things, and we have year-end renew, and maybe some things along that line, but in terms of your concerns, we'll talk with the mayor and follow up in HR, our policy, and make sure that we'll, we'll get a better response off of that. But like you, we're waiting, the sooner this is be resolved, the better. Any other comments, any other visitors wish to comment, address the council? All right, we'll move on then. Under ordinances and resolution, Resolution 120-14, sales tax holiday for severe weather preparedness. We've granted this in the past. This allows folks to, encourages folks to go out and buy items... Uh, we've, we've granted this in the past. Um, this allows folks to, to, encourages folks to go out and, and buy, uh, items for severe weather, such as what we're having right now. Unfortunately, it's April twenty-sixth, so. But, uh, yeah, it's designed for April, so people don't usually think about cold weather in April and July off of that. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion with approved resolution one dash twenty fourteen.
Most approved. Second, Mr. Knight, is there any further discussion or questions? Take a vote, uh, does that have to go? Just take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, passed your man, Mr. Knight. Um, we don't have any public hearing items, council actions. Uh, first item for council action discussion is that the, the second regularly scheduled city council meeting is falls on Martin Luther King holiday. And we've had a policy of not meeting on that day. Uh, and in the past, we've moved it one day to the next to Tuesday. What's the wishes of the council?
I'll promote we move it to the twenty-first.
Uh, Mr. Knight, move it at the same time, same location on Tuesday, the twenty-first?
Second.
Does that work for the staff, everything, right? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Okay.
I have something I'd like to add.
Go ahead.
There's been some rumors, uh, recently about possible, uh, expanding of the historic Parkway. And there's letters, uh, there's a package going to the governor. And there's letters, uh, against this from the Alabama Preservation Society, the Heritage Association, the Alabama Historic Commission, the Alabama Tourist Department, the Youfalla Historic Commission, uh, Historic Chattahoochee Commission, and the Seth Lord Neighborhood. And, uh, if it pleases the council, I would like to add on the next agenda for us to have a resolution as well.
And let's clarify this, this is a, this is in, uh, response to the Alabama Department of Transportation proposal to, uh, widen four lane and reduce the medians.
Technically, there's not a proposal, but we just want to get out of it.
Alright, alright, not a proposal.
And, uh, as Ms. Sarah Connor, uh, actually put the letter in the paper, basically it just addresses that. And, and we don't want to lose our special appeal. And that area in Youfalla is very special.
Correct. So you wanna make that in the form of a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that...
At the next council, we will have a resolution to, uh, address preserving that as it is, correct?
Correct.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Or any further discussion? So the next, and you'll, the, the point would be, this would be a resolution. The resolution would still have to be approved at the next council, so you'll get the verbiage and everything, the detail off it.
Alright.
Um, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carries your man also. Any other council items to come up? Alright, I have the finance committee report.
Uh, well, don't have much, except for, uh, very proud to say that our S and P rating came back and it did not change. It is, uh, currently an A plus and it will remain an A plus.
A plus, stable.
Stable.
One of the, one of the things they do with standard and pores is they can say unstable or watch. So A plus, it's, it's a, it's a very solid rating. Uh, in all honesty, when we, when we were told we were gonna be reviewed, and we're, we're not, they're reviewing all bond issues at municipality level and county level. And this is because of the economic, uh, impact the last several years. And you've had cities and counties going into bankruptcy. Uh, so they're reviewing the, the, the bond ratings and the status. And when the, when we were notified of this, uh, there was a high anxiety level, uh, among a lot of us, knowing where we are and have been. Uh, I fully expected that we'd be, we'd be downgraded, so. Just because, well, standard and pores downrated the United States government, so, you know, uh, they have a lot more wherewithal than we do. And now we're not at the same rating level, but we're still at a high rating level for municipality our size. So this is a major accomplishment. We'll, we'll have a little more information on this at probably our next meeting to give, uh, details and some of the reasons why we stayed where we are. Uh, a great thanks goes to, uh, uh, our city clerk treasurer and her staff, Lori, and those who put a lot of work into this. And the fact that they are, uh, competent and have received numerous, uh, recognitions that are not typically received by communities and municipalities of our size. Likewise, uh, they've been in position a long times, and that was one of the main areas that, that helped us in this. Also, uh, with the mayor and the chairman of the finance committee, Mr. Bennett, where we, where we've been meeting and the department heads who've, uh, started to work on, uh, five-year capital programs. All those things, uh, put us in, in a better standing. We, we know we can do better in terms of how we're applying this, and we plan to follow the best practices, so. Uh, thank the, your efforts and the council's efforts as we went through in, uh, addressing our, our budget issues. Anything else off that?
Uh, well, again, the tax stuff, we'll have a better handle on next month. We can discuss that.
Um, I don't have any more education or library. Well, I do Parks Recreation.
Keith, you wanna? Doing a good job, thank you.
Police fire, Johnny?
Uh, I was gonna speak on this, but finally you skipped Barbara.
I'm gonna come back to her, cause I'm waiting, I'm still seeing some hands, I'm like...
Uh, I, I, I think we need to bring up tonight. I, I was spoken with the mayor, uh, practically all of the county commissioners. And the concern in Forest Hill is reopening that road with the gate down. The county commissioners are willing to take the gate down. First of all, they said, uh, they want to give the road back to the city and, uh, let us do the paving, but we, by, we don't have any equipment to work with. I kinda talked them into, if the street department out there, I talked to Tim, if we keep it clean, keep the trash and stuff off of that road, uh, have the police to, to it, patrol it. You know, probably once a day, twice a day, however. And, uh, they gonna get the engineer to look and see how much, they said pipes they need to... They are scraping and preparing and get it ready for, uh, to be reopened. If we are going to finance part with it. We don't know how much to finance part with it, well, they told me it wouldn't be much, but you know, the county. So I, I, I'm, I'm asking the, uh, city council, let's put this on the next agenda also. After we talk money wise to them and see what are the costs and, uh, to reopen that road, take the gates down so that, uh, Forest Hill residents, we got fifty, uh, in Forest Hill apartments down there, that's about a hundred and sixty people. And over in the Forest Hill area, we got over two hundred homes. That's why I made the statement earlier, I hope nothing happen from this bad weather come and those people be blocked in. Remember, that's where the retirees, the elders and all of those doing retire. So I would like to put this on the next council.
Do you wanna have a work session on it, sir?
Uh, we need to. But I wanted to talk to, I might go over to the county commissioner meeting tomorrow and see what they are talking about. And, and then have a work session, where we'll come back and then we'll put it on the next council.
Yeah, a couple of things that we need to be clear on is what we expect for operation ongoing with both the streets department and handling that, and then also the police department. I think the fire department would have to be able to say whether that's a way that they can get in on grading also, which is the objective, to keep it maintained.
Yeah.
But it may be something where if we go that route, uh, in terms to the best way to handle it, might be to have some kind of cameras or security out there.
Well, they, they mentioned that.
Cause that's a property owner's issue, if I remember correctly. So let's, let's, uh, you get some more data on that, when you get that up, uh, then we'll call a work session, okay?
And you pick over your man. Thank you.
Alright, so Johnny, we have a meeting with Patrick Doodle on Wednesday at ten thirty. Mainly to, mainly to talk about a time, uh, schedule on this acre stuff. But we could probably work some of this in that meeting if you'd like.
That's Wednesday?
Wednesday, uh, ten thirty, ten thirty.
Here.
Uh, City Hall.
City Hall. That's why I'm meeting Youfalla.
And we also have, uh, we were talking about Dudley Quarters earlier, you might want to put on the schedule on Thursday. I have a meeting with David.
Yeah, I, I have that.
Okay, at eleven o'clock. Get enough days as soon as we're at.
I have that.
We don't normally, we don't normally do our city coordination here at the council meeting, but since it's the first meeting of the year, we're trying to catch up on things off of that. Uh, now I'd like to give Mr. Lori an opportunity to say that the reason all this inconvenience with the ants is really the police department, cause this is their facility.
Well, we're gonna have all the ants arrested. I will tell you that.
Do you have any other, any reporter addition for the police?
Well, there was some, um, question about the total num, uh, total number of miles, city streets.
Right.
That's eighty-two and a half miles. Nineteen point two is county miles inside the city limits. And eleven point three miles of this is atrium. Out of the total.
Right.
And then we have the Aldott, which is Clayton Highway eighty-two, four thirty-one, that's covered under Aldott.
Alabama Department of Transportation.
Alabama Department of Transportation. And I'd like to mention that the city streets and sanitation is keeping up all the trash and picking up and checking white oak and chain hatchy. And they're continuing with their patching of potholes throughout the city and doing a good job, guys, and the...
I, I, I don't know, I didn't hear any complaints. And what I saw in terms of, you know, typically right after Christmas with Christmas wrappings and presents